Before the September meeting of the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission, we will begin, as always, by noting the fact that we have a quorum. I believe all of our members are present. The next item of business is the review of our minutes of our last meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review those. I don't recall seeing any comments. They were very well done, as always. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move right into our business. We have no old business, so let's start with new business. The first appropriateness request is that of Brian Rochelle Dixon for an addition on or at 785 Congress. Are the Dixons available? Oh, very good. I don't know that I've ever seen you here, but we let you say as little or as much as you want about your application. Give us an introduction. We've all reviewed your plans, so we know what you're proposing, and we'll take it from there.
So, we're proposing to put on an addition to our house, which is gonna include a first-floor master bedroom, bathroom closet. Also, going to be expanding our kitchen, gonna be extending it out twice the size of the existing kitchen. Also included in that is expanding out a screen porch area and adding one more bathroom. So, we're gonna be going from a three-bedroom, two-bath, to a four-bedroom, I'm sorry, a, yeah, three-bedroom, two-bath, to a four-bedroom, three-bath, and a laundry room on the first floor as well.
Your addition is all one-story, it's not two-stores?
It's gonna be one-story, correct. And the, it's gonna go off the back of the house, basically going straight back, not going any closer to the neighbors to the left or the neighbors to the right, just moving backwards. Our plan is to use the same wood siding, similar siding that we have on our existing house, which is the Dutch Lap cedar, which we're planning to paint same color. We're also planning to do a metal roof on the, on the new structure, as well as keep similar windows that we have right now on the, on the existing structure. So, we're, the new windows, we're gonna put on the addition. We're planning to do the same simulated light divided windows that'll match the existing. Oh, that's right, and we do actually have original, and we bought a picture, so we actually have an original shutters from our, from the house when the property burnt down back in the, or the, some of it burnt off in the twenties, they saved the shutters to keep in the garage. So, we actually have some of the original shutters, which we're planning to put on the addition as well.
That's the original house on this property?
Yeah.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so the first, the top half is, that's the part that burned off, and they, when they rebuilt it, they made it slightly different. They had to basically make dormers. They couldn't put the same structure back on, so.
But they saved the shutters.
They, see, that's right, we have the shutters, so, yep. Yeah, but there's a kitchen, kitchen fire, so they're able to contain it roughly to the back part of the house and the upper, upper part of the house.
So, your current elevation doesn't show any shutters at all. So, does that mean your drawings that you submitted don't show shutter? So, that means you will be putting shutters on?
Yes, we will be putting shutters on, correct.
There's also a piece in the drawing, the shutter windows would be short, and that's not right either. They obviously get the drawing since then, they would be thirty-two by sixty inches.
Yep, which would be identical to the windows we have now, yep.
We have easier to view plans too.
So, on your elevation C drawing, looking, I think, to the back of the house, it shows on the left a window, a thin window. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that's correct.
On the plan view, it was a wide window. So, is that updated on this drawing?
No.
So, you're intending with the wider window?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. And then, the second question is, on the cages view, there appears to be a garage or a structure in the backyard. Does that still exist?
The garage, but I think there's a third, are you talking about all the way back?
No, there's, there's two, there's two extra structures. This one right here? Is that still there?
That is the garage.
Okay, and then, so when, on your plans with the addition, it didn't show how close proximity the corner would be to the garage? So, you'll have eight feet to get through there?
It would be like a way to get eight, so then, maybe like the driveway, sorry, the driveway separate than the backyard, because we have two kids, and it would just be nice here to, yeah.
Yeah.
Segregate.
Okay.
So, when you said you have, you're gonna use simulated divided windows like you have in the house, are those the simulated divided light that, where it's on the inside and outside? The grid is on the inside and outside, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
If you have the current plans, I'd like to see those, because there's really not a lot of detail for elevations of what the screen and porch is.
You know how to read plans?
Yeah. So, these are the older plans, though. These match what was, what we were given, so.
That's right.
So, what kind of, so what kind of detail or what's the screened in porch gonna look like?
It's gonna look the same as it is now. We just had that rebuilt three years ago in the house, where it'll have your standard, like, the best way to describe it.
It'll have a horizontal around thirty inches or thirty-six inches, something like that?
Yes.
And then, some verticals.
The other support porch railing being that.
Sure. Yeah. And is there a particular reason you guys went with a really narrow pitch?
It's because we have windows on the second floor up here that we need to stay a little longer.
And then, the roof, that'll be fine. And then, this is the addition here, so this is existing?
Yes, this is the addition here, this is our kitchen right now.
Okay, so that's existing roof, so that goes to your existing house? Because this is a portion, and that's there.
Correct.
And are all your box cutters to be removed, or just certain ones?
Just certain ones.
On the back?
On the back, yes. We do, we have one mini box cutter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the only one that's gonna, yeah, everything else is gonna, so long as it doesn't interfere with the addition, yeah.
Any kind of, like, concept or what you're gonna do for the railing for the porch down? Does it match another porch on the front or something, or what?
We don't want railing on the front of the porch, it's something that's on our, to do with, but it will, yeah. But it will, it will be matching.
You'll have to, you'll have to do this. Yeah, you'll have to do it by code.
Yeah, we'll have a railing on the back, since that's gonna be a new structure, so we'll put that to code. And then, once we move to the front, it's a do-to railing.
So, the metal roof then? You don't currently have a metal roof on the house, correct? So, which, I mean, is that a standing seam metal roof? Is that, what color is that? Just curious.
It'll be a flat standing seam metal roof with one to two inch.
And this is to wipe the window, it's really loud.
Yeah, as well, these, the, the, the windows, these, oh, yeah, the seventy-two inch kitchen window, yes.
And these will actually have them emolument in the center. But you say these are different also, they'll be long windows?
This is the original, these won't match there. I don't know why they need them short like that, they were trying to make it their counter bed.
Sure. But these, these will stay short? Above the bed. Right, and then, these will be long.
Yeah.
That'll look nicer.
And this is our closet, so we definitely want that natural light. And then, on the side of the bed, we want the same big windows with the one. We don't, we all only have windows on the one side of our bedrooms, so we're trying to up that.
That was the question that I had, was about the, the windows and things, Bob. And so, I, my thought was that it would look better if these were full-size windows. And, and also, if the, if the heads of the windows lined up with the heads in the original house, instead of being.
If you want that, we even asked for the same ceiling height in the nine foot, or the, it's the same ceiling height. So, then, therefore, we want the room, we want room to room to look the same. We even got the four vintage floorboards down at the rebuild. Center down on north side this past weekend, we also have the same five panel doors, which are like steel.
Compared to a new door, yeah.
There's a new, yeah. So, the windows, they have to be the same height as the under, other windows. And we have, right now, built in a fireplace in the bedroom, which is down, and it's that same angle of our dining room.
Oh!
Fireplace, that's the same view center.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank goodness, and it's a trap, I'm like, what is this trap? So, anyways, we're, we're very conscious of that, and we wanna do right by the house. We even have all the original tees and everything like that, so we, we wanna further its legacy of that.
Did you happen to get the hardware for the shutters also? Did they save that? I think you can still get it.
I've got a bunch of it. I gave you the parts. So, yeah, I've got a ton of it. A couple things.
I have another question about the windows after you're done.
Why don't you do that first?
Okay, the, the historic photo shows six over six windows, and it's in, yeah.
You have that photo?
And, so, what, what windows do you actually have now?
One of these that we have the two.
Casement? We have the two in the front of that, window-wise.
These have been replaced because ours, which are still the leaded glass of their dining room, you can still tell the way the, 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 the.
Fine.
So, I'm reading the picture here, these are the.
So, those are the two over six?
So, you have two over two? That's very curious to me, that they went from six over six to two over two.
Well, if they had a fire, we had a fire too, and everyone doing houses, not getting something too.
And is this the front?
Yeah.
That's the front facing the street.
That's the front.
Yeah, this is the front.
That's the original front. There was an addition.
Yeah, so.
It was shorter.
Okay, so you've got, you've got two over twos now, and they look old, and that's what you wanna match. And the Anderson, is Anderson the unique, right? There's, they're good quality windows, and I'm delighted that you're gonna use wood siding and, yeah, okay, great.
You're not using wood windows?
Sorry, I can't hear what you guys are talking about. So, all I heard was two over two, and what do you want me to capture?
Anything but wood.
On the outside, it shows six over six, how two over two are existing now, and they appear to be old.
So, get the fiberglass.
And those are the ones that are gonna match.
Don't make mistake, some of those.
Okay, well, that's amusing to our ears, we just lost our friends.
Wood, they used to grow wood very slowly, without all sorts of chemicals and stuff. And nowadays, it has big, big spaces that are not as strong between it. So, you can take a hundred-year-old house and wood, the paint can fall off of it, and the wood'll be fine. You take a, a new window, and if you don't keep it clogged for a year, it will start rotting. So, just trim work, if you can see on the corners of the house, see a nice trim piece? That could carry across, and would really be a good termination for the siding to come into sight of it, and also waterproofing. And it's easier joint than trying to miter corners, because it won't miter well, not at all. Just matching the detail around.
And you're basically driving that string.
Yeah.
And our, now, it's the same Dutch lap, it's not, they're, it's very, right, it's a place at some point, but it has the same end corner piece.
On the shutter, when, you can come by, and if you'd be, because they, they shouldn't be double at one time. They didn't want it back, so it's not a tough thing, if you want.
I can't hear anything, you guys, you're not talking in the mic.
If they want my shutter hardware.
They want your what?
Shutters, the shutters.
Right.
He has extra.
The other thing, if you're gonna put shutters, you can get copper or lead shutter cans. They just fit over the top of the shutters, because that's where they, when the rain gets on the top. Yeah.
Wow. Are you gonna have to strip those shutters down to repaint?
Some of the ones are distorted, because they're distorted, so nice aside.
That's good, because sometimes they'll just fall apart when you strip them down. That's good. So, did you say you do have updated plans?
Not because of windows.
Okay, just curious. Sure. You know, there is gonna be lead paint on those shutters, though, so be careful when you're sanding them down. Make sure you wear a mask, and don't put it around the kids.
Well, good luck. Let me ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address this application? There's been plenty of discussion, I don't know if there was consensus, but if we're ready for motion, I'm happy to entertain that.
I'll move to accept the application with the changes described to the windows, with a railing that matches the front railing. I think that was it.
Corner boards?
Oh, and corner boards, yes.
I did not hear what was described with the windows, so I don't know how to capture that.
The windows are two over two windows with their choice of wood or.
Fiber glass.
Fiber glass, something equivalent, not fiber.
Simulated divided light.
All right. Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One step closer, a hundred more to go.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next request for appropriateness. That's the request of Steve Thomas for porch railing replacement at 30 West Fountain. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I last saw you on a Zoom call when you approved my steps, front steps for 30 West Fountain. And then, I believe Dan and Beth talked about, hey, have you ever looked at taking the siding off the, the front of the house? And, and my wife still lives with me after I recommended that, but now I'm here to see if you'll approve it for me. And, so, the, the, there's thirteen feet, nine inches on each side of the house of this white siding that I, I wanna take that off and then have the vertical posts, which are twenty-eight and three-eighths inches high, an inch and a quarter squared, and have those put in. Same wood that Andy Cosgrove drew up for, for my steps, and painted, of course, to match the rest of the house.
What will be the overall height of the, of the railing at that point?
Gosh, Bob, I, I don't know exactly. It's the posts, twenty-eight and three-eighths, and then, we have that, these would be white posts with the green railing. I'm sorry, I don't know, that's maybe about a two-inch.
You have a detail on your submission, it's thirty-six inches high plus, plus another inch and a half on top of that.
I just wanted to make sure you wouldn't run into trouble on the height. It has to meet the current code, because you're making changes, and you're fine, all right. Thank you. Now, Bob, if I, if I understand correctly, and all I would be, you know, that current height of it, just be putting those posts.
Right.
Okay, right, thank you.
I'd like to compliment you on the new steps that you put in.
Thanks.
I think, I think they look very, very nice.
Thanks.
So, good, good job on that.
Thank you.
One of the reasons why I suggested taking the siding off is because I think that your house was a shingle-style house originally. Have you ever, have you looked behind any of the siding?
I've, I've tried to look behind the siding, but I knew with my lack of skills.
Well, don't do it on the front.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but if I started to take it off, then it would, you know, I kinda needed to get in here first before I.
Well, I'm sorry that I didn't come prepared, but I think that Glendale Heritage Preservation Museum in the Railroad Depot on the square may have a historic photo of your house. And it, I, you know, I've, I just have the hunch that it's a shingle house underneath. And one of the, the reasons why I think that is because it has that solid railing across the front. And there's another really fine shingle-style house in Glendale on Ivy, in Flora Park. And here's a picture of it. It's actually pictured in, in this book, from the Ohio History Connection, about how to do a historic inventory. And here's a, a picture of the house on the bottom with a solid railing. So, I think the balustrade that you're proposing is, is attractive, but I also suspect that, that, that solid railing is original, part of the original design, so I'm really curious what's underneath it.
Well, there, there's, when I, when I look in, when I peel back the siding, there's, I've, on the small section I've done from the porch side.
On the railing?
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's nothing in there.
Really?
Now, that's a small, small section.
Okay, and the, the, what kind of siding is it? Is it aluminum or vinyl or?
Yes to both of those, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, well, I think the railing that you're proposing is very attractive, but I would like to encourage you, if you start taking it apart and you find out that there's a original solid railing behind it, maybe reconsider. Yeah.
Mr. Thomas, this is just for the, the lower, the first-floor porch, is that correct? You're not doing the siding on the top porch?
No, no, I'm not, Tom, thank you. And there are two, there's two levels of, of the siding. There's a ground level, and then the porch level, and I would be doing the porch level.
Okay, well, I was referring to the second floor.
Yeah, we're not, not touching that.
Up there, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll see.
All right, any further discussions, questions, comments, motions?
I move that we accept the proposal as, as presented.
A second?
We have a second and a, a motion is second. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this application? Any further discussion, members of the commission? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth, if I do take that off and I see, see something there, I should email you.
Sure.
All right?
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you.
I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our appropriateness applications. We do have a public hearing that I'd like to introduce, and that's to discuss changes to the sign provisions of our zoning code. Let me give a semi-length introduction before we begin our discussion. And I'll, I'll get through as best I can without our solicitor, but I think we can do that. In 2015, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision known as Reed versus Town of Gilbert. In that particular case, the Supreme Court overturned the, the Town of Gilbert's zoning code relative to their signs. They, they found that those sign regulations in that zoning code were not what they call content neutral. That mean, this particular ruling means that if regulation is based at all on the content or the message of the sign, it probably would not pass constitutional muster. You know, a classic example of something that is not content neutral is regulations relative to real estate signs. You know, in our own zoning code, there's particular provision that say a real estate sign can be this size, can be this height, it can have this kind of wording, it can be out for this long. Well, that kind of, of the regulation is perhaps constitutionally suspect under the Supreme Court ruling that, that I just referenced. Therefore, we organized an ad hoc committee consisting of myself, Dan Mazum, and Beth Sollebarger, and with the assistance of our solicitor and village administrator, we took a deeper dive into the zoning code, or the sign provisions of the zoning code. And we, the end result of that work is what you have before you today. It's a comprehensive redo of the sign regulations from our zoning code. What you'll see is an attempt, and I think more than an attempt, it's an actual accomplishment of making our regulations content neutral in a way that conforms to the Supreme Court's decision back in 2015. Structurally, what you'll see is we've combined all of our sign regulations in one subsection, or one section, I should say, of our code. Currently, the sign code is sort of split up between regulations that apply to residential districts and regulations that apply to the business districts. And we thought, as a committee, that it made sense just to have them all together. Within that new section that we're proposing, there's, we cut out and make distinctions between signs that would appear in the residential districts and the business districts, but we, again, we thought it was most appropriate to have it all in one place. The purpose of this meeting today is to hear from the public. These regulations have been published on the website for at least a month now, I believe, is that correct, David? Of course, it was advertised. So this is the public's first opportunity, and perhaps only opportunity if things go well today, to have comments, at least to this plan and commission. The rest of the process is, once we hear from the public, I'll open the floor to discussion amongst the members of the commission. Once we've exhausted all of our discussion from either side of the aisle, we will, I will ask for a vote. The vote could be, let's pass this on by way of recommendation of approval to the village council, or it could be a recommendation that we denied the work that was put in front of us. And the third possibility, of course, is to defer to a later month for further consideration. So, in a nutshell, that's what I propose for our discussion today. Unless there's any comments, preliminary comments by members of the commission or of the committee, I will open the floor to members of the commission to hear what they have to say about the draft sign regulations.
Well, this, this work has been, this work has been in progress for several years.
It has. It was on my notes, but I neglected to make comment that shortly after the Supreme Court made that decision, we had organized this ad hoc committee. As things sometimes work in the village, it was slow to get up steam, further slowed by COVID. So we finally had a chance to put our final thoughts together, and that's where we're here. That's why we're here now. Mr. Parrish?
This proposal concerning the signs, residential signs or commercial signs, that is not in effect, you say?
What, yeah, what was published on the website and was available here today, and I think it's even on the podium, is not in effect.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because I had a sign outside that was enforced by, that was not correct. The sign I had, let's address racism in the village of Glendale, outside of my car, told it wasn't raised, so I put a chair and had it raised, and still it was addressed, and this is not even in effect yet?
Well, I don't know what sort of enforcement activities happened for your sign.
Remove them.
Okay, oh, is that right?
This is in fact.
Okay, you know, I would just pass a copy of our ordinance that's outside of zoning that talks about putting signs on a public place. And zoning, in a very broad sense, is regulation of private property. If you were, if there was some enforcement activity on your sign, about your sign, on public property, that would fall outside of zoning. That's a different sign code, a different provision that I can't speak to beyond
We have our voting here in this building. Correct? This is where I vote at every year, and when I come in here to vote, we have people on the sidewalk and outside of here with signs that are advertising what they're advertising. I'm just trying to understand the standard or the fluctuation of the standard with my sign basically in the same area. And this is not even passed yet as enforcement yet.
The ordinance you're referring to, if you go to 95.12, erection of sign in a public place prohibits anybody putting any sign up in a public space.
Including during election when I come here to vote.
We'll talk about that. Also, just
We don't talk about that. That is a sign. That's what I'm talking about. That's my issue here.
You know, that's not what we're here to talk about right now.
We're talking about signs. We didn't clarify what kind of signs.
Yep.
So, I mean, are we segregating signs now? A sign is a sign, isn't it?
And there's, just so you know, there's also a penalty of $100 that can be filed per day for putting up illegal signs right now.
Well, we understand that finances is a big thing in the village of Glendale, but I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about that, the monetary value or penalty. I'm talking about sign. Not a white sign, not a black sign, just a sign, and if they can have their sign there, no matter if it's political or
To the attorney?
Huh?
I think for political signs, we ought to address that to the village attorney.
Well, you don't have them here, there, so it can't be addressed there. So that would be incomplete for the discussion to start if you got something that you haven't clarified.
Yeah, I don't, and even if the attorney were here, Mr. Parrish, I don't think that she would be comfortable talking about enforcement activities. There's prohibition against
He brought up, it could be $100 a day. I didn't know that, but he brought it up, so you brought it up through council.
You brought it up.
I didn't bring up anything about fine, after you brought it up.
You asked about your sign, why it was taken away last week.
It wasn't taken away. I was asked to remove it.
Okay.
Yeah. But you brought up the fine, it could be fined $100 a day. I didn't, I didn't mention anything about money. I mean, I live in the village of Glendale. Evidently, my family's here for 100 years. We can afford it. Okay? Has anybody else's family been here 100? Okay. Well, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for clip. I'm not, I'm just getting it on the record. This is a recorded session, isn't it? Okay, that's all. We just want to make it so that, because we find out that the record-keeping by the village sometimes, especially under the, to which all the village administrators edit it, and then when you guys vote to accept amendments, things that are supposed to be added are not added. So that means that we have an in-app public records system to keep accurate records for archive. But thank you.
Do you have any specific comments about the code that
Not really. It keeps changing, and we're used to those changes. We've been here a long time. We're used to those changes, but I won't waste your time with that.
All right. Well, on that last comment, I don't think in the 20 years that I've been here, there's been any changes to the sign code of the zoning code. So, anyone else in the audience wish to address the draft sign amendments to our zoning code? Members of the commission?
I have one question.
Sure.
On your section, what do we see, 36 and 37, under definitions?
Tom, can you talk into the microphone? It's hard to hear.
Section, under definitions, number 36 and 37, talk about wall signs mounted and wall signs projecting. Did you consider it all wall signs painted? Meaning that instead of a mounted physical sign, if somebody painted a sign on the, on the wall?
I don't recall that specific discussion, and I can stand corrected by members of my committee.
If I may, I don't, I don't believe that was a consideration that was part of the original discussion.
What, excuse me, was or was not?
Was not. Painting a sign on a flat surface rather than an actual material that would be installed?
For example, an example might be, you remember the mural that was on the side of the running shoes store? In essence, that's a sign that was painted on the side of the wall. Are those allowed, prohibited, special use permit?
Under this proposal, I don't think that we address that as a specific type of sign. But I don't know of any areas in the village where they currently exist. Of course, I guess if you have a flat enough surface, that could be anywhere.
Right.
But I don't even think that that's something that we would, we have current zoning code to
There's no way to prohibit it anyway. You can't prohibit it on content, and you can't prohibit on color, so how are you gonna
No, I mean, like, if on a, if on a wall
Size would be the
20 by 20 for sale sign, painted on the brick wall, for example. I'm not saying anybody would do it, but it's just, you never know.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's, that was the only question I had.
I think Mr. Kerr is a good, a good question. In my mind, a painted sign should meet the same dimensions, the same requirements for dimensions. And I never thought of the mural on the side of the running store as a, as a sign. I thought of it as, as art, and I don't think we have anything in our code about art, public art. And I, so I think that would be addressed under a different
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't recall anything either, and if we think back to the old soft drink ads from like the 50s and 60s, holding a bottle, it's a nice piece of art, very obvious what it was for, and you still see them, so it's a good point. Yeah. And then we have to define how the dimensions are taken. Are they taken from letter to letter? Just what's the paint, the paint part, I guess, what's painted is the way you define the dimensions.
Right. I would think, Tom, that a painted sign would be considered a wall-mounted sign, or even though it doesn't have the three dimensions that you normally would see of a McCamina-type sign, it is mounted on the wall. In that sense, it's
Could you simply insert or painted?
Could be, yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, it's open to interpretation.
Attached to or erected against or painted on.
Or painted on, yeah.
That would cover it, I think.
It's a good point. It certainly would. It would clarify any unclarity.
And another comment, just for the record, when would these, this is just for the record, when would these be enforceable? So if someone has an existing sign, they're going to have to comply to these if they go to change the sign, correct?
Correct. If they make no changes to their sign and the current sign, and it doesn't, does not conform to the new regulations, assuming these are adopted, it becomes grandfather, it becomes a non-conforming sign. Any changes, though, to that sign, we'd have to bring it more into conformity.
Correct, okay.
Right, and that's addressed in the code, and that's pretty standard zoning stuff.
But it still has to be maintained.
Oh, yeah, maintenance is always still a requirement for any sign or any structure, really, for that matter. Oh, yes, sir. I don't think anybody said that. Art? Well, I, I'm not sure I understand your question. If you've got an image painted on the side of your house, does this code consider that art? Is that what your question is? I'd have to see it, to be honest with you. You mean like a flag or a banner or something? I'd have to see a better example. I've never seen, I haven't, since I read this fan sign.
Do you have specific addresses?
But the best answer I can give you is maybe. We'd have to see it.
Yeah, it really can be based on the conditions and specifics to those signs as we encounter them.
Right, the dimensions.
Right.
But we can't, we don't regulate content of signs, whether it says Ohio State or Harvard University, doesn't make any difference.
Right, right. Right, yeah, that's the key takeaway. Beth, I appreciate you reemphasizing that.
Yeah.
The Supreme Court says we can't regulate content, so if you've got a political sign in your yard that says one thing, and in any event, we can only look at the size and the height and the construction and so forth.
Right, the placement.
Right. Any further discussion? If not, we do have a number of options, as I pointed out. We can pass a recommend, pass a motion recommending that this be heard by the village council. They'll get on their schedule. I believe they'll have to have their own public hearing. Or we can defer if you want additional time to look at this, or you could recommend that, a recommendation of denial be passed on to the
I have a question, Tom. Can, can you read the part that's been added? Can you read that with the phrase that you added about painted?
Oh, to the definition?
Yeah.
That's all I recommend.
Yeah. This is on page four, definition number 36. The definition is of wall sign, comma, mounted, and what Tom is suggesting is the following: A sign that is attached to or erected against, comma, or painted on, comma, the outside wall of a building or structure with the exposed display surface of the sign in a plane parallel to the plane of the building or structure.
Okay, I move that we approve the, the draft as presented with the change that you just read. On page four, number 36.
Okay, and that's a recommendation, by way of a recommendation to village council?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Last chance for this commission, at least. Remember, the plan, or the village council will get this after us. We added in the painted, that, that's what he just read. It doesn't, it's not in here. Page four, number 36, he just added in right, for the wall sign. They added in painted. It's allowed. All right. We have a motion to recommend approval to village council with a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Let's the record show that I'm recusing myself from this discussion because this is going to come to council where I will have to preside.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that concludes our action items for this evening. We always allow time at the end of our meetings for others who wish to address the commission. Anyone else, anyone in the audience wish to address the commission?
Glendale Planning Historic Preservation. I needed clarification on what role does Glendale Planning Historic Preservation Commission play in our green spaces?
In what sense? You mean the dedicated green space along Oak Avenue, for example, or?
Yes, I mean, I noticed when the GCIS was proposing to develop some of our green spaces, that you guys had no voice in that. You didn't tell people that that couldn't be done because they were protected under covenant agreements, and they still have signs thinking that our green spaces are in jeopardy. And I'm wondering why the silence? Anyone?
People chose to keep them up.
Yeah, we, we can't speak to the signs. That's all private actions, not something that we did.
No, no, no. I was just saying, in the discussion, I'm saying that you guys still have not told people in the village that are unaware that they could, the green spaces cannot be developed because they were under a covenant agreement that protected them from being developed a long, long time ago. from being developed a long, long time ago. You guys are the keepers of our history and should know this. Are you saying you're unaware of that?
We didn't say that.
No, you didn't, you're not saying anything. I'm giving you a chance to say.
Well, that, that's public property. It, it's under the control of village council, just like the streets are, just like this building is. If they propose something, we arguably would be a reviewing body. But village council didn't propose anything to us.
The, the report that came back to the village gives a false impression to residents here that Summit Park could ever be developed into anything other than a green space. Johnny's Park could never be developed to anything but a green space, and there's some other things that are protected. Because the founders of this community knew, because they were abolitionists, knew that later on, what kind of people they would be dealing with in the future that thought like this to destroyed protective properties for residents of the village of Glendale. Yet, are you guys saying or not saying that you're unaware of the protection that was put on these green spaces? That they could not be developed?
Do I know what conditions, or does this commission knows what, know what conditions apply to all the pro, public properties in the, in the community?
No, not the public.
Those are public properties. The green spaces are public properties.
All of them are, all of them are not protected under a, do you know what the covenant agreement is, do you not? Beth, you know what it is, a covenant agreement is?
Yes.
Could you explain it to the rest of the council so they will understand?
You don't have to, Beth. This is not an interrogation.
It's not an interrogation. I mean, you guys are the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission. This falls under the history and your commission of what you, you're supposed to be aware of.
If something comes before us, we deal with it, nothing.
It has come before you.
No, it hasn't. Nobody tried to build, nobody tried to build a structure on the, on a parkland.
No, the, the GCIS wanted to develop because they found plans of development of subdivisions for Summit Park.
Sir, sir, what's the GCIS? I'm not familiar with that.
For the record, I think he's referring.
GCIC.
CIC, the Community Improvement Corporation. That was the body that was considering it. Uh, it, at, on this particular piece of property, it was determined that no development could take place. That doesn't apply to all, all public properties.
I'm glad you clarified that, Mayor. Can you tell them why no development could take place?
I'm not, no, no, I can't. Because I'm going to take each piece of property as it comes forward, and we will consider it, just as we did with this 10-acre parcel up in the northeast section. We did that, we considered it, and we found that we didn't think, we, we could not develop it. If other properties come up for possible development, we will look at them too.
Johnny's Park, did you guys have the same conclusion to that also?
Johnny's Park is the, what they call Johnny's Park, it's not an official name, it's just a common name in the village.
Green space.
Was not, yeah, was the one I was talking about. It's a 10-acre parcel up in the northeast section of the village. It's the one that the GCIC was looking at.
I reviewed the notes, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking you guys to review the role that you play as Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation. Preservation, historic, preservation, those are the key words. You don't know the history of what you're dealing with, and you're making decisions for us?
Well, we didn't make.
You ask questions, but you don't listen for the answer. The answer is, nothing came before us regarding Johnny's Park. Nothing came before us. Until something comes before us, we can't just get up and chime in.
Well, for them to even consider the development of something, don't they use you guys as an entity of possible research?
No.
No.
You don't?
We deal with facts that are brought before us.
That's good. I'll say some, some more facts for the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Is there a motion?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.